May 21, 2024, regular council meeting at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeSean.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Good.
You have the minutes from May 7, 2024, in front of you. Is there any questions on those?
I'd like to make amendments to the minutes. In my report last meeting, I was supposed to congratulate Gannie Mead, not Advanced Fiber. I had the wrong company.
What, where does that add in here?
It should be in the reports for committees. Yeah.
So you want to make a motion to amend the minutes and change Advanced Fiber to Gannie Mead?
Yes.
Did you actually, if I may, I'm sorry, I have a question for him. Did you actually misspeak, though, and say Advanced Fiber?
Yes.
My recommendation would be not to change the minutes since there are factual representations that happened, but in your report tonight, correct yourself.
Andy?
I am more in favor of Mr. Myers's recommendation than changing.
Sorry to interrupt.
Any other questions on the minutes? Need a motion accept. James made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. granting permission for visitors to speak. Do we have anybody who would like to address the council? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, we have a letter of communication and petition that was received Tuesday, May 21st, by email. It is addressed to Bucyrus City Council. It is from a Mr. Danny Burns. I will let the council clerk read this communication.
To Bucyrus City Council, I have spent 57 years in Bucyrus, Ohio. I have always worked within city limits and paid taxes. I grew up always thinking that the Bucyrus Bratwurst Festival is in fact Bucyrus. My thought process always was, okay, it's in Bucyrus, put on by taxpaying citizens of Bucyrus, and never once have I considered the Bratwurst Festival and the city of Bucyrus as separate things. I was under the impression that the city of Bucyrus is citizens of Bucyrus. Apparently, I was wrong about that. Some of the current members of the council are making it sound like the Bratwurst Festival is just some business that has nothing to do with the actual city. Each meeting sounds as if some of those members seem to think there is someone within the festival profiting from the event or pocketing money. The financial records were demanded when none were produced. They are making it seem like crimes are being committed against the city. One member of the group first stated that we cannot prove no one is misusing money in one breath, and then the next was giving advice on how the festival can make their own money to pay for the city's services. Then a member of, then a member found old financial records and started to scrutinize things they did not understand and made a public statement saying they have a problem with the way the money was spent, and they wonder why the festival directors did not release the records for 10 years. If you have no knowledge or involvement in an event, there is no way financial records will prove anything, and the festival has already suffered a publicity blow from all the allegations alleged by the current government. So since the festival is just some business and the city is losing so much money for paying for things, it's probably for the best if the festival moves somewhere else where it would be welcomed with open arms. It has always been an issue in this city anyway. Factories, stores, and more have, has moved because of unfavorable conditions caused by the city. It will be remarkably interesting to see how well the city financials will look after they stop wasting all of that money on the festival. I'd say they can just lower our taxes by double fold and buy all new vehicles for every department. I guess I am not smart enough to know how to promote a city and display to visitors and potential newcomers just how well the city government and the taxpaying citizens get along and have, one weekend a year, they hold a very well-known event. The kindergarten fighting and the unrealistic plans to save the city has reached a level that is extremely embarrassing. I was always happy some of my tax dollars was going towards extra events that people enjoy. I think it's more than fair the festival pays for trash disposal, but as far as safety forces, I think that is ridiculous to charge any event within the city limits extra for that. The citizens pay taxes for safety services and should expect a level of coverage no matter what is going on. If we are going to get technical on costs, it's time to start breaking down and micromanaging and billing every cause for overtime, extra coverage, and that's not just for safety services, that's for everything. I think a line-by-line breakdown of every hour of overtime that occurs in every department needs listed with the cause of overtime, and if anything caused it, then the city needs to bill for it. That list should then be posted for any taxpayer to see what caused that overtime. So current leaders, go ahead and separate the city from the festival or anything else that makes Bucyrus special. I am sure those involved can celebrate and pat themselves on the back for knowing they saved the city. Signed, Danny Burns. And he notes at the bottom, I would like to note that I have nothing against any member of the current city council. I know some of the members and have for some time. I find very good qualities in each person. I am only giving my thoughts on how this all looks to the people paying attention.
Need a motion to accept and file this letter? Mr. Hickman made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor. All opposed. Standing committee reports, plating, Mr. Me.
The city, Bucyrus City Council will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 6:00 PM, in the council chambers at 500 Sandusky, Bucyrus, Ohio, for the limited purpose of discussing the following: amendments to Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 1187.01D and 1187.03A to accommodate the inclusion of accessory structures for the home occupancy use, and the amendment to the Codified Ordinance 1198.03B to clarify the general surfacing requirements for the off-street parking and loading areas. Residents may express their opinions about these proposals zoning changes in one of two ways: one, by appearing at the public hearing on May 28, 2024, at 6:00 PM, where they will be in opportunity to present their opinions; two, by submitting a letter addressed to Landon Hill, interim zoning administrator, city of Bucyrus, 500 South Sandusky Avenue, Bucyrus, Ohio. The letter must be received prior to public hearing so that it can be entered into the official record during the hearing. For questions about the proposed zoning changes, please contact the city interim zoning administrator, Landon Hill, 419-562-6767, extension 226.
Any questions for the plating committee chair? Moving on, public lands and buildings, Ms. Sherrick?
Nothing at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for public lands and buildings? Chair? Health and Safety Chair, Mrs. DeSean?
At the May 7 Health and Safety Committee meeting, we discussed several topics. One was the Bucyrus Food Mart LLC asking for a liquor permit. The committee approved the liquor permit application and also did not request a hearing to be held for that. And the Bucyrus Food Mart LLC is located at 574 South Sandusky Avenue. We also discussed the vacant structure registration. Motion was approved to place a notation on the open project list that the matter has been referred to the ad hoc committee for creation of property maintenance code. Trap neuter return program. Committee requested Law Director Gernert repair a draft ordinance updating Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapter 505 to include stray cats or to create a city ordinance for the stray feral cat population, and for the amendment of Section 55505.01 dealing with the animal warden, of whom we do not have at this time. Lastly, penalty fee for Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Section 189.22. This deals with a tenant roster. This is a roster to be completed by person or business who owns property inside the city limits for the purpose of renting or leasing to others. The completing of a statement to include the name of the tenant, address of rental property, and date of tenant occupancy for filing with the income tax office. Auditor Lewis said she was fine to drop the matter, and the motion was approved to remove the item from the open project list. End of my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Health and Safety Chair? Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers?
I have nothing to report. The Finance Committee will meet again this Thursday, May 23, at 6:00 PM.
Does anybody have any questions for Finance Committee Chair? Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman?
I'd like to make a correction to my last report. I had mentioned to congratulate Advanced Fiber Technologies. I misspoke. It was supposed to be Gannie Mead Technologies. Other than that, I've got nothing to report on.
Anybody have any questions for Economic Development Chair? Service Committee Chair, Mr. Moritz?
At the last Service Committee meeting, we were given Title IX besides Codified Ordinance proposed changes to go over and look at. I am planning on seeing if anybody has any opinions, questions, or where you want to go with it on next meeting Thursday.
Any questions for Service Committee Chair? Special Ad Hoc Committee chaired by Mrs. DeSean?
We, tonight, will be having our third reading of proposed ordinance 11-2024 dealing with amendments to the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113.
Special Ad Hoc Chair? Special Ad Hoc Chair, Mr. Me? Anybody have any questions for him? Traffic Commission, Mr. Truca?
No report.
Anybody have any questions for Traffic Commission? Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively?
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Moritz made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded it, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Report of City Officers, Mayor Truca?
I have no written report, but I would like to report now on Tommy Sterner, Dylan White, Jeff Dunn, Landon Hill, Wessler Engineering, and Arcadis Engineering, myself. We met with the United States EPA today, as well as Ohio EPA.
Oh, can you turn your microphone off, please?
Any rate, we met with them, and we had a very good meeting. We're pretty much on a good standing with US EPA, as well as Ohio EPA, stating that we have continued on separating the stormwater, which has made them very receptive to us. It's a different atmosphere, I believe, now, and they've asked us to get some materials to them in the next couple of days, and they're going to review everything that we are, and everything looks very favorable. I guess that's all, one thing I can say is everybody's, seems as though everyone's going to work together, so. And then the other thing is that, I guess that's the end of my report. Maybe Tommy can, in his report, he can talk about the red light on Walnut and East Mansfield Street.
Does anybody have questions for the mayor's report? Okay, we'll go to the Service Director's report. Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, City Council. The city hall will be, hours will operate, changing starting June 7, 2024. The new hours are 8 to 4 PM on Fridays only. Monday through Thursday will be the normal hours of 8 to 5. The All, All-Miner Pool will be open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from 12 to 6 PM. If more lifecards are hired, we will adjust this accordingly. This weekend, it will be open Saturday, Sunday, and Monday for the three-day weekend. Number three, Katie Raffled from the Crawford County Health Living Coalition would like to do a fit and fun playscape template at Shrine's Art Park sidewalk with chalk, and I would like to refer this to Public Lands and Buildings Committee for their consideration. And on the corner of Walnut and East Mansfield Street, the traffic lights there were waiting on a control module. There was no sense in restringing the old lights just to take them back down here in a week or so, or whenever we get that module in, which is supposed to be here at any day. That's all I have.
Do they have any questions for the Service Director? Law Directors' Report, Mr. Gernert?
Thank you. So after reviewing Resolution 212, 2024, and the annexation agreement, which was attached thereto, and discussing the same with Mrs. DeSean, it was determined that the Bucyrus City Council had already approved the administration to petition the Crawford County Commissioners to conform the boundaries of both the city of Bucyrus and Bucyrus Township. As such, Attorney Mader prepared the petition with the applicable documents necessary, and the same has been submitted to the Crawford County Commissioner's Office. As such, you won't find legislation in your packet because no such legislation was necessary to finalize that process. Based upon the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code, you have before you tonight the first resolution necessary to proceed with the Fire Police EMS Equipment Levy. If the same is passed tonight as an emergency, I will then take the legislation to the Crawford County Auditor's Office for the necessary auditor's certifications. The auditor issues a auditor certificate, which will then be used to prepare the second piece of legislation, which outlines the actual ballot language, and then authorizes the Board of Elections to proceed with adding this to the November ballot. So previously, I had talked about we could have a first reading and then even pass it as an emergency after a second reading. But now that we have to have two pieces of legislation, this one, I would request we pass it tonight as an emergency, and then if we want to have two readings on these, or even plausibly three readings on the second piece, we can do that. But to move forward and get the auditor certificate and to get that piece of legislation put together, I would ask council to consider passing this one as an emergency on the first reading tonight. And then we have in your packet also accepting lands from the Crawford Land, Crawford County Land Reutilization Corporation. The Crawford County Land Reutilization Corporation hired an environmental science firm. Their name was Burgess and Nipple to conduct an assessment of the property located at 214 East Perry Street. The environmental science firm conducted an assessment. Their first phase was in January of 2022, and again, they had Phase Two after the demolition of the structures which occurred in November and December of 2023. Although the report is approximately 1,400 pages, I've looked through the pertinent parts as to the findings of the assessment. There's three main parts of the assessment pursuant to a voluntary agreement protocol, which the EPA is involved with. So they evaluated the groundwater, the soil vapor, and the soil. As to the groundwater, after testing three separate sites at varying depths, the results of those tests did not exceed the respective unrestricted portable use standards in the wells that they were monitoring. There were some volatile organic compounds which were discovered in subsequent laboratory testing, which would have been above the unrestricted portable use standards, and the firm indicates there may be additional testing necessary in the future pursuant to the voluntary agreement protocol. Soil contains some concentration of arsenic and antimony, which is above the applicable standard for residential use. However, the levels of both arsenic and antimony were below the commercial industrial use threshold. And then finally, the soil vapor was evaluated based upon the intended use of a commercial industrial building to be constructed on the land, and the concentrations of any substances in the soil vapor were determined to be below the applicable standards for that intended commercial or industrial use. In summation, it appears to me as if although there are some chemicals present around the site, as long as the intended use is commercial or industrial in nature, the levels of these chemicals would be below the applicable guidelines promulgated by the Environmental Protection Agency and its partner agencies. As the intended use appears to be maintained as a vacant property with access to the city's sewer infrastructure, none of these chemical concentrations should be seen as a significant concern. And finally, please note that this is a area in the floodplain, so any utilization of this property, either commercial or residential, would have to comply with the applicable FEMA regulations, and as such, development would be unlikely, given the costs of the necessary precautions that FEMA would require any development to undertake. And if anybody wants a copy of the 1,400-page report, I can get you a zip drive. I won't print it for you, but.
You mentioned that Burgess and Nipple said there could be potential future testing at whose expense if we were to take possession of the land?
So we don't actually have an agreement. This voluntary protocol, or voluntary agreement protocol, was something that the land bank and the EPA came up with. I would have, I don't know off the top of my head, we don't have an agreement with them, and I don't know if the end user, that somehow they transfer the agreement to us and say you have to comply, but that would be something that I would have to talk to Barb with the land bank about.
Mrs. DeSean?
In checking the public lands and buildings, March 23, 2023, minutes where the matter 214 East Property Street was, East Perry Street, who I can't talk to, was discussed, Mr. Myers had also brought up, along with making sure that, you know, no contaminants, but that the land bank also absolve the back taxes. Do we know if?
Yeah, so those are, in their process, that has to happen.
Okay, great.
Yep. And I don't know, I forget where I read it, but so Crawford County was awarded $1.5 million in brownfield money, which this would be a brownfield property, plausibly, so I'll talk to Barb, but that would be something that we could plausibly utilize some of those funds from the, from the land bank.
I think taking the property is great. I just don't want to take it if we're going to have to spend money for any reason on it.
And I don't know, too, and that would be something, maybe, to reach out to the engineers. If we never intend to use the groundwater, is there any reason that we have to further test it?
Right.
I don't know.
Is there a deed restriction on, that you're aware of, on the property?
Yeah.
I would assume outside of any deed restriction, we don't have to, we're not obligated to continue to do that testing, you just mentioned.
Well, generally, yes, but when the EPA is involved, sometimes they make up the rules as they go.
Mrs. DeSean?
Since Resolution 223, 2024, dealing with East Perry Street property, has been prepared as an emergency, do we want to hold off on addressing this until we find out the answer to Mr. Myers's question, which I would like to know if any answers?
I know that the land bank has a meeting tomorrow, so I wonder if Bruce could have somebody from administration go and attend and ask those questions?
Sure.
Bruce is a member of the land bank.
That's true.
And I don't know, I know that they wanted it done, but I don't know that there's any reason that they have to transfer it yet, correct?
They want to get those, those lines cleaned out.
So we want to transfer it, but the land bank isn't?
We want to transfer it, yes.
The land bank isn't under any time crunch to get rid of it?
Right. It just happened that we knew there was a meeting tomorrow, so.
And we want it transferred again? Why? I know you said that.
There's sewer lines that haven't been cleaned out in 28-plus years.
Got it.
That's never been cleaned out.
And right now, that, right now, is that's one of the things that the EPA is looking at, is we're trying to get the sewer lines along the river cleaned out, and I, we know we got blockages. So blockages in turn cause the CSOs to overflow, and they overflow into the river.
So if we didn't do anything with this piece until our next council meeting?
It's lasted this long.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, March 23, 2023.
Whenever they built the interceptor.
Chip Dinsen's been here 28 years, and it's never been serviced.
28 years, never been cleaned, so I guess what's another couple weeks?
So are we leaning towards not passing it tonight?
I think that.
Table it?
I'd like to make the motion to table it until we get the answers to that question.
I second that motion.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mrs. DeSean seconded, all in favor of tabling.
Aye.
All opposed. Any other questions for the Law Director? Auditors' Report.
There's not much of note to report directly from the auditor's office this meeting. My office has noticed an increase of electric usage in areas related to the Water Works Fund. Due to the increase, I would like to refer to Finance Committee transferring a total of $20,000 for the purpose of keeping current electric payments for the Water Works Fund. I did want to add in last second, and I'll give you what I've written in, Miranda. After last meeting, some concerned citizens made clear their worries about overtime charged after Bratwurst Festival hours. After consulting with department heads, changes were made to the reported hours. Due to the types of service provided by each department, those changes were contained almost solely to the police department. And that is all.
Need a motion to refer the transfers?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Questions for the auditor? I have a question for the auditor. That proposed tax, property tax for equipment, and is that going to help that $500,000 projected shortfall that you were anticipating by 2027?
Yeah, that would, by, it would relieve stress on the general fund. So we could use that money, what we would typically use out of the general fund at this point now, transfer to the Safety Forces Fund to cover the cost of making equipment purchases for police and fire. It would help alleviate those stresses.
How much, do you know off the top of your head roughly how much of the 2024 budget for police and fire is a equipment-type expense?
I can try to look it up real quick.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that, you know, that levy, the way the wording's going to be, it can't be used for anything other than equipment, so, you know, if we run into shortfalls with the wages and the salaries, the levy does nothing for that. Unless we're freeing up a bunch of money that was going to equipment before. I know we have a fire truck that's got payments being made on it, which that would be?
$65,000.
$65,000. Sixty-five thousand-ish. Yeah. It goes down slightly each year.
If we are counting just capital outlay, this year, we had budgeted $196,851.41 just in the general fund, and...
That's combined for police and fire?
That was just police. Let me see, fire would be... In the general fund, $50,102.40. In the Safety Forces Fund, under police capital outlay, was $21,000. And fire, there was nothing budgeted. So during the transfer of all the stuff, I had to create lines that weren't necessarily in the Safety Forces Fund. But some of these expenses, so when we're talking about purchasing a new ambulance or something like that, it would be a large purchase. And though it may, we would be using it for that, and then that, because we wouldn't be using our income tax dollars, we would instead be using this property taxes, this property tax levy. What we would be using to make a payment on an ambulance or something of that nature, we could then be using to pay for a retirement buyout or something like that. It's kind of just moving money around.
So combined, this 2024 police and fire equipment that was purchased or planned to be purchased this year, how much roughly was that for both departments combined?
That was this year?
Yeah, 2024.
2024?
About $350,000. I was counting in my head.
Okay, thank you.
About $350,000. But did you include the fire truck loan?
I did not.
So it's well into $400,000.
About $400,000, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the auditor's report? Treasurer's report dated April 2024 is included in your packet.
I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's report.
Second. Ms. Sherrick made a motion to accept the treasurer's report file, and Mr. Myers seconded it all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have a fire report for April included in the packet.
I believe it's accepted by...
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. I also forgot, I need a motion to the service director's request for the Crawford County Healthy Living Coalition.
Fit and Fun Place.
Fit and Fun Placecape templates for the Shines Art Park, referred to Public Lands and Buildings.
I have a question about that. Does that alter it down there? It says with chalk.
It's a one-day, it's a good, sorry. It's a one-day thing. It's Good Friday, it's the first Good Friday. They're going to set up a booth down there, and they just want to do that to try it out, to see how it's going to go over.
I said, right now, I think that goes under where we gave you guys permission to handle things like that.
You guys, that's kind of like an administrative plan.
Yeah, you guys can do that. Like, I don't think we need to actually...
I agree.
Because it's not altering it. You're not painting, you're not changing, you're just using the space.
Mr. Mayor?
I think this is a precursor to something else that they are proposing. Because they were proposing actually putting like a hopscotch permanent thing on the sidewalk. And what else were they...
There's several games.
There's several games that they would like to have put on the sidewalk. This is just to see, this right now is just chalk, but we'll bring the whole concept to you to go and talk about.
That would be when we do something about it, see how it goes. I think that they should go ahead and do their precursor, see how it goes. Because until they're altering this space completely, I mean, right now, it's just temporary. It'd be nice to see how it turns out.
Okay.
So you don't want to put it into your committee?
We wouldn't need to at this point in time, no. Because, I mean, they could decide that they didn't like those or not anyway and never bring it to us, so...
I'm fine with that. So then I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion. Mr. Myers seconded all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors input regarding reports of standing special committees and city officers. Is there any visitors that would like to... Please state your name and address.
Hello, First Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I just had a couple notes here. There's been a lot of negative discourse, so I went ahead and did some of my own investigating, which apparently I'm decent at. So I know we have a lot of open projects in the city that were brought up in these reports, and I didn't know if any of the funding consider were coming from any grants. I did find several online that I'd like to share with council and administration. One of them being the All Ohio Future Fund. I know you've looked into that one. It does provide a lot of grant money for open projects for public roadwork, water, wastewater and related infrastructure, design engineering, demolition, wetland mitigation, utility gap funding, and one-time site enhancements. And I believe that has a pretty high ceiling for that one. I think we've used this one before. There's also the Small City Grant Program that we are actually listed as an eligible city for. This also does pavement rehabilitation, roundabouts, bridge overlays, signals, roadway widening, road diets, utility and stormwater pump station improvement, curbs and ramps. And then lastly, I thought this was important, given the issue with the sewer overloading into our waterways. There is a substantial U.S. Fish and Wildlife grant eligible. It is due by the end of this year. And that one is pretty substantial. There isn't a great synopsis of it, but it looks like there's a lot of infrastructure improvement and removal of toxic chemicals or programs to help remove the toxic chemicals from our wastewater. So I would be more than happy to send these to you guys, but I think it'd be a really important conversation to have about looking at grants. I think that would help our budget concerns as well, especially with the sewer project. Thank you.
Any other visitor input regarding reports of standing in special committees and city officers?
Fred Fisher, 430 Stevens Court, Bucaris. Tonight, five of you have an opportunity to undo a wrong. We've spent since the first of the year pretty much in attack mode on the Bratwurst Festival. And there's the third reading tonight as to whether, what from my perception is attack mode legislation to make this an ongoing issue every year, when the festival itself has done a tremendous amount of good over the years for the community, both in publicity and probably, there isn't anybody in this community in one way or another that has not directly or indirectly been involved. I would guess that there's been well over a million dollars of money that has gone to various veterans, booster clubs, charity organizations over the life of the Bratwurst Festival. And a high percentage of that money is coming from outside the county or the city. So it's a way for those organizations to thrive. And it's been really embarrassing for the last four and a half months to see all this time spent on going after and literally calling the IRS and the auditor on an organization with no evidence whatsoever. So my suggestion would be that when this comes up for a vote tonight, that you vote no. And instead of burning bridges with the taxpayers of this town, you start building them, because you're going to ask us to vote for a property tax levy to help for equipment. And you have been spending an inordinate amount of time on the festival and a few thousand dollars, when in fact, we need hundreds of thousands of dollars. And yet, you want us to go ahead and support that? So I think this would be a good time to kind of try to build those bridges back and take an organization that has done a lot of good for this community and quit harassing it, literally. And so we can work together to address the real problems that we're facing here. Thank you.
I have a question for you, if I may, please.
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Mr. President here? Can I ask him a question?
No. There is no requirement that public participation includes... back and forth. So in essence of time, I'm not going to allow a question right now.
I shouldn't have asked you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance number 25-2024, it's the appropriations for a police cruiser. Amending and supplementing ordinance number 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by appropriating from unappropriated Safety Forces levy funds, the sum of $30,000 to the capital outlay line item within the police department category within the Safety Forces Levy subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance 26-2024, it's the chip grant. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the Crawford County Commissioners for the administration of the PY2024 Community Housing Impact and Preservation or Chip Grant Program if funded and declaring an emergency. Resolution 221-2024, it's the TIRC Tax Abatement Recommendation. A resolution hereby accepting the community reinvestment area tax abatement recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council, or the TIRC, for the period ending December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution 222-2024, it's the amendment to Resolution 210-2024. Amending and supplementing Resolution 210-2024, authorizing and directing the mayor and the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucaris, Ohio, to proceed with Westler Engineering AT-SR 103 Suite C, Lufton, Ohio 45817, for the implementation of the pre-construction tasks necessary for Option 2, as presented by Arcadis US Inc., for renovations to the Bucaris Wastewater Treatment Plant, not to exceed $58,500,000 and declaring an emergency.
Prior to that, 224-2024, Mr. Fankhauser, you have to ask for a motion to suspend the rules, or President Fankhauser, sorry, to suspend the rules and proceed with Resolution 224-2024 from council as a whole without first having it go through committee?
Okay, Resolution 224-2024 is... being brought forth, not having gone through committee first. So we first need a motion to suspend the rules and allow this piece of legislation to be brought before us tonight, having not gone through committee.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded it all in favor, or no, we need a roll call. Yeah, we need a roll call.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yeah.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, all opposed. Nobody. It was all unanimous. Okay, now you can proceed with that one.
Proposed Resolution 224-2024, it's the planning loan for the wastewater treatment plant. A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or public service safety director to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the City of Bucaris for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency. And then, proposed Resolution 225-2024, it's the police and fire equipment levy. A resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional tax levy for the purpose of, one, providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, and other fire equipment and appliances for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications for the purchase of ambulance equipment, and for the provision of ambulance, paramedic, or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or firefighting company, or for the payment of other related costs. And two, providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment in buildings used directly in the operation of a police department pursuant to Sections 5705.03 and 5705.19 JJ of the Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Motion accepted as the first reading.
Make a motion. Second.
Mr. Maritz made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Just for the record, can you guys explain to the administration why that 224-2024 is being brought to us so quickly pertaining to that wastewater loan? It was explained to me in the mayor's office, so I'd like it to all be... They didn't like the wording because it had the other design engineer in it. So they wanted to get it back to the design engineer that we had actually picked. And this was the EPA saying? This is the EPA saying this, yes. And this is so we can start the process of getting a loan? Right. Of the design loan. Because the other, we had passed this already, but it had a different firm in the legislation, a different firm's name that was doing the engineering, and it's being changed now, so... Okay, public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation has been read for the first time. Don't see anyone. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed Ordinance 11-2024, it's Bucaris Codified Ordinance 111 and Bucaris Codified Ordinance 113. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapters 111, Council, Rules of Council, and 113 ordinances and resolutions of Title III Legislative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucaris, Ohio. Proposed Resolution 216-2024, it's the bed tax agreement with Bucaris Tourism and Visitors Bureau, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucaris, Ohio, to enter into agreement with Bucaris Tourism and Visitors Bureau, Inc., to promote tourism and to attract visitors and conventions to the Bucaris City area retroactive to January 1, 2024, through December 31st, 2025, at a cost of 50% of the bed tax collected pursuant to Bucaris Codified Ordinance, Chapter 181, ORC Section 717.20 and ORC 5739.08. Further authorizing and directing the Bucaris City Order to issue a warrant or warrants for appropriate appropriation or appropriations in payment for said services. Resolution, proposed Resolution 218-2024, it's the maintenance agreement with Crawford Partnership. Be it resolved that the council of the City of Bucaris hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of Bucaris to enter into a maintenance agreement with the Crawford Parks District for the service road located throughout Unger Park and Omler Park. Proposed Resolution 219-2024, it's the repeal of 218-2021. Resolution repealing Bucaris City Council Resolution Number 218-2021 in its entirety. Proposed Resolution 220-2024, it's to transfer land with the Crawford Park District. Be it resolved that the council of the City of Bucaris hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of Bucaris to transfer certain real property owned by the City of Bucaris, being permanent parcel numbers 07-0001197.001, 07-0001195.002, 07-0001195.003, by quitclaim deed to the Crawford Park District.
Need a motion accepted as the final reading?
We could separate, stick with what we did the last time, 219 out as a separate vote, so that Mrs. Sherrick and I could abstain.
Okay, need a motion to separate just the 219, 2024? So we're gonna not vote on accepting that as a final reading right now. It's gonna be separate as soon as we have this vote, I'm gonna ask for a vote on that. So I need a motion to pull that from the vote that's gonna happen right now, so need a motion.
So moved, I think I can make it, yeah.
Oh, okay, Mr. Myers made the motion.
And I'll second that.
Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Now I need a motion to accept as a final reading the 11 dash 2024, the 216 dash 2024, the 218 dash 2024, and the 220 dash 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded, all in favor.
I think we did that backwards. So it was supposed to be all of the other ones first, and then 219 second. So currently Kevin and Aaron have made a motion to accept 219 dash 24.
No, we made a motion to remove.
That was to separate them out.
Separate, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we're just doing those four right now. Accepting that as a final reading. It was Mr. Myers made the motion and Mr. Maritz seconded.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Now I need a motion to accept the 219 dash 2024 as a final reading, and Mr. Myers and Ms. Sherrick are abstaining from this vote.
So the best way to go about it would probably be to have a first, a second, and then a roll call vote.
Okay. I'll still take this first and a second here, and then when we get to the voting, I'll do a roll call.
I move to accept proposed resolution 219 dash 2024 as a final reading.
Yes. Need a second?
Second.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded, and now we're gonna have a roll call vote. This is just accepting it as the final reading.
Myers?
Abstain.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Abstain.
Hickman?
No.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So.
We have
It passes.
Two abstains. A no, and three yeses to accept it as.
Four yeses.
Four yeses.
Oh, there's four, okay.
Yep.
Okay, it's accepted as a final reading. Now public participation on any of the legislation has been read for the final time. Anybody want to have public participation?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. I apologize if my ignorance in this is not, this is not the appropriate time to bring this up. However, the ordinance 11 dash 2024, I was curious if either the council would consider amending it or moving a separate motion back to the ad hoc, because my concern is that the way that it is written now, it is not enforceable unless, for any violations of it, unless you follow Robert's Rules of Order, which is very complicated to deal with any kind of not following procedures in our rules of council. So my concern is that there is no, essentially there's no accountability for if there's continued or lack of adherence to these rules for council members.
So you are correct. There is no enforceableness. We actually have an ordinance that says you shall not leave this meeting without getting permission from the chair first. We had a council member several years ago that just walked right out of a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Nothing happened.
Mm-hmm.
It was filed into courts, and the judge said, uh, they didn't really want to get involved. He said it, I don't want to, I think his official thing was he didn't want to, something with that person was voted in, and I, you know, just let him vote him out. So that's really the only recourse.
Yeah. So you can escalate it if it's like malfeasance, misfeasance, if that's the kind of issue when to bring it to the court, but if it's like in here.
Has to go to probate court.
Right, right. So the way that I had read this, it says that if anything is not outlined in here, it defaults to Robert's Rules of Order. There is actually a procedure for, like, for the council itself as, as a body.
So Robert's Rules of Order does not trump anything in the Ohio Vice Code. The Ohio Vice Code takes precedence over the Robert's Rules of Order, so even though something's not mentioned in the Bucyrus 111 ordinance, it may be already mentioned in the Ohio Vice Code, which I, I know, I see what you're saying, but we can't follow something that's in Robert's Rules of Order if the Ohio Vice Code says that you have to follow this actual procedure to do something.
Right, because I know it says in there, and I don't know the actual Vice Code, and maybe this is something to ask Mr. Gerner about, but it does bring up those three charges specifically as a criminal charge, but there is no, like, outline of the body itself holding itself accountable. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I would, I would like to see, and since you do a lot of research, please do some research for us, like, other parts of the state of Ohio, if a council member has been removed from a sitting council. I, I would like to see where that has successfully ever happened.
Yeah, I, I would agree, that's.
Because I, I don't, I.
And I don't even mean just removal, but I feel like there could be, like, an outline of procedural, either like, you know, having to abstain from voting, or, you know, removal of speaking privileges, what have you.
Yeah, and so the United States Congress censures people, right? So you can vote and censure somebody, which is a fancy word for saying, don't do that no more. Like, you get into a very difficult point where you have elected officials plausibly, you know, misbehaving or whatever, which doesn't rise to the level of removal from office, but, but then, you know, sanctioning somebody who are having their ability to participate in an open forum for a job which they are elected to. So I, I mean, your point is there's nothing in here, maybe we should table it and come back and look at it, and I'm willing to look at options and see what is out there in the state of Ohio, but, you know, it's been my experience that that's a very tricky issue when you're, you know, I mean, you're elected by the City of Bucyrus, and that doesn't give you your carte blanche to do whatever you want, but that's tough.
Yeah, if there was, like, a broke body, it would be difficult to hold accountability. That's.
There's, there's videos on YouTube of other city councils as the people get up and leave the meeting, and they're tearing over computer screens off the desks on their way out the door and all kinds of stuff like that.
And some of that would be, like, criminal damaging stuff.
Yeah.
But were them people actually removed from their city council? I don't know.
Right.
Didn't Marjorie Taylor Greene and AOC get into it the other day?
I, I don't follow that stuff.
And they, you know, like, I don't know, it's tough.
It was blatantly obvious to me when we had a member that violated the 111 clearly, walked out the door, and nothing happened, that none of this is enforceable. So why even do anything with it, is what I ended up, you know, I, that's why I don't come in any of these ad hoc meetings for the rules, because it sounds like the rules don't matter.
Well, I don't think that's accurate, but I think that what the judge was saying was that would not.
He didn't want to disenfranchise the vote.
Right, and that violation may not have risen to the level of expounding of malfeasance, misfeasance, those types of things, which would have required removal of office, but there are violations such as vacating meetings. In the Ohio Vice Code, it says that if you, if you're not excused from a meeting, you get dock pay, like, there's, there's lesser things than removal from office, which I don't know if any other city council throughout the state of Ohio has anything in their codes like that, but I don't know.
Carol? Mr. President, I'm, I'm lost on this conversation here. Who are you referring to? Are you referring to anybody in particular? On council, or is that just a general question?
No, ma'am, I'm just referring to the actual chapter 111.
Okay, thank you. I, I was lost.
Yeah, there might be something in the 111 that if it isn't followed to the T, and then, like, we passed a piece of legislation, and then somebody wanted to challenge that legislation in the courts, there may be a situation where a judge may decide, eh, you didn't follow that right, so we're gonna invalidate it, but as far as, like, removing somebody up here.
Yeah, then it's in the Ohio Vice Code, like, if you don't follow the procedural steps outlined in the Vice Code, it's voidable, it's not necessarily invalid, but it's voidable, and then there's a timeframe where you have to challenge it, but, I mean, that exists.
Well, even.
And then there's substantial compliance, right? So if you didn't follow everything to the T, but you substantially complied.
Well, I gave you another example. You know, if council does something wrong, and there's, like, a statute of limitations of a certain time after, nobody decides to challenge it in court, it pretty much goes on.
With everything, yeah, yeah. As the Chair of the Ad hoc Committee for Chapters 111 and 113, I'm fine with, you know, not having our third reading tonight, which it was scheduled for.
Well, we already had the final reading.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we accepted the final reading.
Okay.
So I think what would happen is we would have a vote to pull it, and then you send it back, and it'd have to start all over again, it'd have to go through three readings all over again, if you change anything in it. Do you want to do that, Chair?
I'm fine with that.
And then you can come to that ad hoc meeting.
Oh, definitely, yes, definitely, just want you there.
So do you want to make a motion to pull that?
Uh, yes, I make a motion that we pull proposed ordinance 11 dash 2024, dealing with Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapters, and I'm gonna say 111 and 113 because they are combined in, you know, the one ordinance. Is that all I have to say? Oh, I refer it back to committee, to the ad hoc committee.
Need a second?
Second.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded, all in favor of pulling that.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Any other public particip, public participation? Don't see any. So, yes, Mrs. DeShawn?
I have a question, um, let's see. Am I allowed to ask a question concerning a proposed resolution, which I guess we did accept as the final reading? This is the transfer of land.
We pulled that, we pulled that.
There's another transfer of land.
Yeah, this is to do with the Park District.
Yeah.
220, yeah.
What's your question about it?
Uh, the question that I have is, in the resolution, we are talking about authorizing the mayor to transfer certain property over to the Crawford Park District. In Section 2, we make reference to the fact that the Crawford Park District is then going to be transferring property over to us, it's a swap. Now, when we did the 214 East Perry Street, which I guess we're tabling for right now, is that correct? In that particular piece of legislation, we accepted the land from the Reutilization Committee. Yeah, we accepted the land from the Crawford County Land Reutilization Corporation. So I'm wondering, are we wanting to do the same thing with this land swap, whether we make reference in resolution 220, or we have a separate piece of legislation where we then are going to be accepting?
So the reason the land bank needs for their records, or the Crawford County Land Reutilization, needs for their records, something accepting that. Typically, real estate, you don't have to have, you can transfer it without the acceptance, it's on the.
Okay.
But to your point, then, we want to actually, you guys can authorize the mayor to transfer it, but we're not gonna transfer it until they simultaneously transfer it to us, right? So there wouldn't be consideration for our transfer until they're ready to transfer it at the same time.
Okay.
But you, I mean, so legally, no, we don't need a piece.
Gotcha.
But if you have been, for record purposes, we could have a piece. But then my also point was, we're not going to transfer it, and then wait, and, and then if they don't transfer it to us, then we're out of there.
Got it.
We'll sit on that until they're ready to transfer.
Okay, I, I understand, thank you for explaining. Okay, then my question's been answered. Thank you.
At this point in time, we're gonna refer these all back to originating committee. Being proposed ordinance 11 dash 2024 to ad hoc, proposed ordinance 25, 2024 to finance, proposed ordinance 26 dash 2024 to economic development, proposed resolution 216, 2024 referred back to economic development, proposed resolution 218 dash 2024 referred back to public lands and buildings, proposed resolution 219 dash 2024 referred back to finance, proposed resolution 220 dash 2024 referred back to public lands and buildings, proposed resolution 221 dash 2024 referred back to economic development, proposed resolution 222 dash 2024 referred back to public lands and buildings, proposed resolution 223 dash 2024 has been polled, proposed resolution 224 dash 2024 referred back to council as a whole, proposed resolution 225 dash 2024 referred back to finance. Committee report on pending legislation, Finance Committee.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 25 dash 2024. Finance is favorable to proposed resolution 225, 2024, and on proposed resolution 219, 2024, I'll defer to Mr. Me.
219, 2024, finance is favorable.
Economic Development?
Economic Development is favorable to proposed ordinance 26, 2024, proposed resolution 216, 2024, and proposed resolution 221, 2024.
Public Lands and Buildings?
Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to proposed resolution 218, 2024, the maintenance agreement. Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to proposed resolution 220, 2024, the transfer of land. Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to proposed resolution 222, 2024, amended resolution 210, 2024.
And then the 223 has been polled. So council as a whole on this 224 dash 2024 is favorable, I will report, since it doesn't have a committee chair. Okay, further consideration of pending legislation. For second and third reading, our proposed ordinance 25 dash 2024. For second and third reading of proposed ordinance 25-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
Who would you like to-
Mr. Myers made the motion and was it Mr. Hickman? Yeah, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 25-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Myers?
Um, Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes, yes.
Ordinance 25-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 26-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs., Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 26-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Oh. Is it Ms. Sherrick made the motion and Mr. Maritz seconded?
Sherrick?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 221-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
It's Ms. Sherrick and Mr. Maritz seconded.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 221-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Resolution 221-2024 is duly adopted. For second and third reading of proposed Resolution 222-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hickman made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Uh, Hickman?
Yes.
Uh, Sherrick?
Yes.
Me? Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 222-2024?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Maritz made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 222-2024 is duly adopted. 223-2024 has been pulled, which is the land bank receiving. Okay, for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 224-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 224-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made it and Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Resolution 224-2024 is duly adopted.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I ask a question about 225-2024, which is the police and fire equipment levy? I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that this has to do with just equipment? We're not looking for payroll or anything like, because I know there was some discussion and I wasn't-
Yeah, the committee requested just for equipment.
Great, okay, fine, thank you.
It could only be those specific things listed in the caption, which are taken directly from the Ohio Vice Code.
Okay.
So basically, if we pass a levy for equipment and then we do run out of money for payroll, we'll still have new cars for the people that's still working here. That's a good description of it. It's to guarantee we still have newer equipment if the city falls off hard, falls on hard times. Because last time in 2010-ish, they was running around with cars that had bumpers falling off and
Thank you.
bald tires and stuff. Okay, for second and third reading of proposed Resolution 225-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman was the second.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 225-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 225-2024 is duly adopted. And then we pulled this 11-2024. And then 216-2024 is up for a final reading. So I just need a, a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 216-2024.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion and Mr. Hickman seconded the motion.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Resolution 216-2024 is duly adopted. 218-2024 is up also for regular, or it's final reading, so I need a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 218-2024.
I make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Maritz made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded it.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Resolution 218-2024 is duly adopted. Next up, Resolution 219-2024, which is the repeal of the Bratwurst Festival Permanent Agreement. I need a motion to adopt 219-Resolution 219-2024.
I move to adopt Resolution number 218-.
2024?
Yeah, I guess I was looking-
You mean 219?
Yeah, let's start that over, yeah. I move to adopt Resolution number 219-2024, which is the repealing of Resolution number 218-2021.
I second.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion, Mrs. Shireman seconded it.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Abstain.
Hickman?
No.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Abstain.
Okay, we have two abstains, a no vote, and four yes votes, which means Resolution 219-2024 is duly adopted. Resolution 220-2024 is also up for its final reading. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 220-2024.
I'm motion to adopt it.
Second.
Mr. Maritz made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Resolution 220-2024 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Anybody have any?
Mr. President, I think I have a question.
Yes.
New and old, great. What, what have we heard on the Wagner thing? Do we have any kind of an up, update?
No.
Why not? I mean, can I ask why?
You can. I don't think that I would answer it, though.
Okay.
Well, we, we went into executive session to discuss this last because of pending lawsuit potential, so-
But I, we haven't gotten anything since then, so I was just kind of wondering where we are standing.
Well, why don't you call, you could probably meet with the law director tomorrow and he can maybe fill you in if he's not in court.
Yeah. I could talk to you after the meeting, but I don't know that what is the phrase, like sleeping logs, dogs lie.
Any other old and unfinished business? Moving on, new and miscellaneous business? Nobody have any? Excuse council members are absent, nobody's absent. We only have two referrals.
We have one referral.
Oh, we only had the one because, yeah, we decided we didn't need the other one. So we have the finance committee transfers.